Okay, alright. Alright, good evening all. At this point, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee on Thursday, February 2nd, 2023 at 7:00 PM. I'd like to begin the meeting by inviting you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, next on the agenda, I would like to ask Anna to please read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you Dana. The Hamilton Wenham Regional School District would like to acknowledge the Massachusetts Tribe. The tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, provident province, and Commonwealth of Massachusetts have taken their name. We would like to pay our respect to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts Tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historical Massachusetts Tribe territories to this day.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next up are citizens comments. It don't appear to be anyone in the room who would like to offer comment.
Jen Koffler?
I offered it to her. Eric, do we have anyone on the Zoom?
Not, nobody on Zoom.
Okay, and we are, I'm just confirming that we are after 7 o'clock, so, um, alright. Moving right along, I think we'll close the Zoom link.
Closing Zoom.
Okay, um, next up, as is, we've been doing all year, I'd like to, um, how, read a portion of the school committee protocols. Julia, ju-
As elected members of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to ensure that the students of the district receive the best education possible. To that end, we hereby commit to the following in the conduct of our business. Number 12, the school committee recognizes the importance of working collaboratively with town officials and actively seeking their support to improve the district.
Thank you. Next up, Julia, would you mind grabbing that paper? Um, oh yeah, I can do it.
Thank you.
And I'll ask either you or Amy if you wouldn't mind reading that.
Do you want me to read it? The Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee will lead and inspire a district that supports and guides the superintendent to execute and achieve the approved 2022-2023 district goals.
Thank you. Okay. And next up is the consent agenda. Um, does anyone have any items from the consent agenda that they would like to hold?
Can we hold the field trip?
The band competition field trip?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have a question about it.
Anything else?
Can we hold the annual report? Also, just a question.
Yep. Anything else? Alright, Amy.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approves the consent agenda as listed for this evening with the exception of the annual report and the field trip.
Second.
Second by Anna. All those in favor? And that is unanimous and the motion passes. Alright, we had two items held. Jen, why don't we start with yours? What was the?
It says that on the field trip permission slip that they're using a personal vehicle. Can we do that?
Yeah, as long as it's, as long as they give us, they have, so Brian wrote in his memo near the back that he has on file a valid driver's license and registration. That's our policy.
Okay.
Yep.
That was my only question.
And then the, the parent permission form will also state that individuals driving.
Like I said, that was, it was a quick question.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, uh, can we have a motion on, uh, the field trip?
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approves the field trip as listed in the agenda of this evening.
Second.
Second by Jen. Um, is there any further discussion?
No.
Alright, all those in favor? And that is unanimous and the motion passes. Um, I think Anna, you held the annual report?
Yeah, my question is, in years past, I feel like the document titled Annual Report was a pretty big, like 80-page document that included the curriculum and a nice letter from the superintendent and then a letter from Dana. Is it, is this meant to become part of something else or are we changing what we're doing? I just want to understand how this compares to the prior years because it seems different.
Sure. In previous years, I don't believe this was ever on an agenda, but it goes to the town of Wenham. We basically changed, change out what we have to, but town of Wenham requests this report from us for their, their own annual report. Our annual, our budget report, which is the document you're talking about, will be next meeting. We don't publish it till after the budget vote is taken.
Okay, so that they are different. It's a different-
Oh, they're very different. Yeah, this is just for, for Wenham.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, good. I'm glad I correctly identified that it was different. That's good.
Right, no, and that, and you're correct, that does, is still exists. I believe though, it's called like the FY24 Budget and Annual Report.
Mm-hmm.
It's got a different, slightly different name.
Yeah, we've been working on that one for a couple of weeks now and the final, the final version will come on the 9th, after the budget vote.
Okay, great.
Okay, is there, anyone else have any other questions on that? Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approves the 2022 annual report for towns as linked to tonight's agenda.
Second.
Second by Julia. Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous and the motion passes. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Um, thank you. The, I think it's worth noting that the first meeting of the Cutler School Building Committee happened this week on, on Monday evening. It was a rescheduled meeting, but, uh, this meeting was designed to go in conjunction with the MSBA process for Module 2 to, uh, begin the process of hiring an owner's project, manager, excuse me, lost my train of thought there, which, or, or otherwise known as an OPM. So we've talked about this in previous meetings. Um, the committee reviewed the contract that we basically get a draft contract from the state. We tweak it and add our, rubric basically on how to decide between different candidates. Uh, we'll send it back to the MSBA for final approval. They'll, once they approve it, then we post it publicly in all the required places. Central Register and the paper, things like that. And then, um, there's a two-week period where OPMs will be invited to apply. Uh, we had also on Monday night created an, a subcommittee of, right now it has six people on it that are going to review the applications. And then bring it down to a short list of three. And then the MSBA will actually get involved with us again as we get down to the, the, the shortlist and, uh, do interviews and scoring to finally come up with an OPM for our project. So that should all be done by mid-April at the latest as our current timeline. I think the other thing to note is we've been really working to tighten up all the budget documents and all of the, uh, what we call our budget report, which is the, the, the large report that Anna was talking about earlier, that, um, we're making some changes in it. We're trying to get some more graphical interface, if you will, so that people can, can get a visual of what some of the changes are. Uh, some of the things were requested, if you remember during the, uh, multi-board meeting we had, uh, things like, can we get more charts to explain what's happening with the budget and things like that. So we're, we're working on some adjustments and changes and then that document will come to us, um, this week, uh, excuse me, next week on the 9th. And then, um, just to follow up on, uh, my trip to Atlanta last week. It was a great opportunity. As, as I said before, I was one of 15 superintendents invited across the nation. Was fortunate to work with superintendents from Utah, Wisconsin, Florida, Kentucky, some, a couple of other mass, uh, superintendents. And, um, New Jersey, some of the big school systems like Denver. Uh, we're part of our group and we're a cohort group that will meet for the next six months. Uh, the initial kickoff was really working on problems of practice and trying to work within our own groups to help each other and push each other to gain some insight on, on our own problems of practice, but also to get some feedback from people who may not be familiar with, with your school district. So it was, it was a, a really quick two-day in-out, but it was, it was amazing. We had some great conversations. Our, um, our, um, guides, if you will, were, were extremely helpful. They brought in some communications people to help us to figure out how to best communicate some of the messages involved in, in these problems of practice. And then also, um, we'll meet four more times between now and May online to, uh, we actually present to each other, give each other feedback. So for me, it was, it was a great opportunity to connect with a, a whole bunch of different superintendents, including superintendents who are running school districts of 90 buildings and, you know, hundreds of thousands of kids. So, um, I thank, thank the school committee for supporting that and, uh, certainly I appreciate it and learned a lot and continue, will continue to learn, I'm sure. Yeah, thank you. The groundhog did see its shadow, so that means six more weeks of winter and 18 more weeks of school, so.
Is that being concentrated all tonight?
All tonight, tomorrow is not gonna concentrate.
David, can you talk into the mic so that they, for the recording?
Uh, one question is, um, any progress on the YMCA and the after-school program?
So we are, thank, thank you for asking that. We, we are working with the YMCA to look at options for after-school programming. David and I actually talked about this the other day, Tuesday, I think. Um, so we met with Chris Babalacqua a couple of weeks ago. We talked about trying to figure out what parents would like to do and how they would like to do it. So we, he built a survey. We gave him some feedback on the survey. And we'll send that out to mostly elementary. It seems like mostly elementary are interested and then try to devise something for them. So we're about where we are in the process right now. So, thank you for putting that one out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for the superintendent? No. Um, I, thank you very much for the update on the, um, leadership group that you've joined. I think it's, um, I think it's a real, it's, it sounds like a really great, uh, resource and an opportunity to, um, get some, a really wide range of viewpoints on how to handle a whole number of things. It sounds great. So, thank you for that. Okay, um, alright, we are cruising. Alright, uh, capital finance, uh, we do have a meeting date.
We do have a meeting. Um, it's the 9th at 4:30.
Okay. Great. Um, policy. We have some things.
Okay, thank you. Um, as you might remember from the last time, policy and full click committee came together, there were three very specific, I-section policies that were referred back to the subcommittee. So tonight, we are presenting to you those three specific policies. Um, so maybe we'll start there and then we are presenting to you for a first reading, the L policy, which is very short and sweet. So, um, maybe what I'll do is go through what we've changed to some degree, um, and sort of answer some questions that I know had come up the last time around. The general concern, as we understood it, was that the policies made it sound as though the school committee had more of a role in choosing materials than we really do. And we wanted to make that clearer in the policy. So, I-J, you'll notice, uh, there was some language about the school committee adopting or selecting. All of that has been removed. The main change is at the last line of section, of sentence two, where it says, "Because instructional programs and materials are of great important, importance, the committee expects the following criteria to be met." That was a very specific change. Before it said something like, uh, "Will only be adopt, only be adopted by the committee if." And that's, that is a change. I believe that was really the main line that we did. The other thing, the other line that was sort of troubling to us that we talked a lot about was the line that said, "These will be furnished by the school committee subject to budgetary constraints." One of the things that Dorothy made clear to us in a way is that the school committee does sort of adopt curriculum in two ways. One of them is through the, um, approval of the high school, um, course of study. But the other one is the budget itself, right? So when you adopt the budget, you're choosing to fund foreign language. You're choosing to fund certain courses of study and science. So by the structure of what we choose to fund in terms of positions is a roundabout way of saying we're supporting curriculum. So that's what that line is getting at. Um, and that's why we've kept it in because that was sort of, um, the guidance from the MASCE. Did I miss anything?
No, that sounds right to me. I'm sorry, Amy, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I said, "That sounds right to me."
Okay. Are there questions on this? Julia?
I, the, my question is not necessarily on the policy, but it is on the proper procedure for a parent or community member who has a complete concerning instructional resources.
Are you wanting to jump ahead?
What'd you say?
That's the next policy.
That's the next one.
Oh, you're ahead. No, I know, but, okay, so it, it says the proper line of-
You're in the next policy.
Parents should talk to.
Yeah, you're in the next policy. You're so speedy.
I am in IJR though.
We're in IJ.
We're in IJR.
I'm in IJR.
Yes, we're in IJ.
Oh, sorry. Well, I'm skipping ahead.
Yes.
Really, sorry. But I think you're right. It sounds like no one else has questions about IJ, so.
Beautiful segue.
Exactly. We have no questions on IJ.
Okay.
Okay.
I, 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 um, I don't think I have a question. I think that, I, I appreciate the policy committee taking the time to, to make those adjustments. And also I think that is, I'm glad that the line is there about the budgetary constraints, right? Because just because a, a particular material meets all of these criteria doesn't mean that the district can afford that material. So, and so that's important, um, to, right, that's important distinction. So I appreciate that. Um, alright, uh, Amy, can we have a motion on this?
Yes, I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approves policy IJ as posted in tonight's agenda.
Second.
Second by Julia. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And it's unanimous and the motion passes. Great.
Yay. policy so close.
Now, Julia, do you want to ask your question first? Or do you want to hear my spiel first?
Spiel.
Okay, so, this one, we hemmed and hawed and hawed and hemmed. And my very first statement was, if we have this and we have KE, which is the policy that governs public complaints, do we really have to have this? And Dorothy's response was, "You really do because it provides a framework for what you expect and how things will be resolved. And in the absence of framework, chaos can reign." The superintendent also expressed that it's helpful to have the school committee provide guidance so he's not left out making decisions without frameworks. So, we decided then we would continue to tackle through it. And a couple of the things that we, um, sort of looked at, again, we took out any language that talked about adoption and, uh, approval. We, uh, changed the word from, I think it was concern or request, maybe. There was a word that we changed to complaint when a complaint concerning instructional resources arises. That we changed. And then the, the really important part here is that we changed it to, um, "Will be made in a reasonable period of time using district-adopted policies and procedures." Meaning, this might be where you're going, you would go back to KE, which very clearly says, "The first line of complaint is a teacher, administrator, superintendent, and only when it bubbles all the way up to the school committee would this sort of kick in." And then you sort of read through the rest of it. That says, "We will, if it reviews to us, it won't be removed until a decision is made." If the parent making the complaint doesn't want their child to have access to it, they can pull their child from it, but that doesn't mean every other child has to be denied it. Um, and then if the same sort of substantive complaint keeps running off over and over and over again, that, that's, that wouldn't be allowed. It would have to be a three-year period of sort of saying, "Look, we haven't looked at this particular complaint for three years. Let's take another look." But if someone is forever complaining about the same book or the same type of book or fundamentally the same issue and that gets resolved, then there's sort of a three-year period where it has to stay quiet.
Um, I think what, I didn't think that it needed to be in this policy, but I just know that for the public, um, that, so they need to refer to, um, which policy?
KE.
KE.
Which is not-
For the proper procedures of how to file a complaint.
And that's not yet on the website.
Okay, I didn't think that it needed to be in this policy, um, but I was just looking for where I could find it. Okay, so KE.
And that's not yet on the website because we're, we only approved those in January and there were a few other like typo things and formatting things that Janelle is still making.
No, I think this is very comprehensive. Um, and I think you took into acc, I know you took into account a lot of the, um, questions and feedback that we provided. So, I appreciate that.
Okay, I, and, uh, as the person who posed a lot of those questions, I feel like my questions were answered. I do think it's, um, it is helpful to highlight for this committee that you do have the cross-reference at the bottom and I do think that that makes, that's helpful. I'm not actually sure whether that was there before, but it's helpful to have it there. So, um-
We thought of you often that evening.
I, I think I even said, "How can I pretend to be Dana?" And then I said, "I could never be as good as Dana, but I'm gonna try."
Oh my.
I think there's, I think it's on a recorded meeting. I said, "How can I channel my inner Dana?" Um, but what, I just add this sort of as a final statement, that Dorothy said that more and more, you know, these policies are important. You really don't think you want to have to put it out there, want to say it, but if there are challenges, you need a process to go through them. Like you can't, you can't let it be unspecified, so.
Right, and I, and I will say that, um, I, you know, I have heard, David Palito is the one that has shared that with me numerous times. You create policies not for when everything is running smoothly, but for when things have gone awry. Um, and that's why we have a policy. So, um, okay. Are we ready for a motion? Looks like we are. Amy?
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approves policy IJ-r as linked to tonight's agenda.
Second.
Second by Julia. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous and the motion passes.
Great. And then the last one was sort of hilarious. It was IMG and Dana very wisely noted that the original DPH document reference had the wrong title and was unfindable on the internet. Dorothy has corroborated it, so I'm here to show everyone that the correct policy reference was Animals in the Classroom: Recommendations for School. This is the right one. It's the first thing that comes up on your Google search. So hopefully that satisfies Dana's concern. And so that has been changed in this policy. That was the only issue with this policy. Uh, but we do have the right document and Dorothy thought it was kind of funny that no other school committees had noticed that. If you Google the old one, mostly what you found were other school committees who had adopted blindly this other policy. So, we might have actually done some good work for the MASCE on that.
Well, and to my point that I just said, that David always says, that that this is a perfect example of something that when it goes wrong, you want to be able to put your finger on that policy and say, "Yep," I mean, that document, and say, "Yes, we're following this document." So I'm glad we have.
This non-existent document.
Alright.
I, this is the biologist in me, so I'm gonna apologize here. Could we just say fur-bearing carnivores? Because technically a rat and a guinea pig are fur-bearing animals, but there's no way they have rabies.
What? Where are we?
Guinea pig can't have rabies?
But they can have parasites, fleas, and other diseases.
Mm-hmm. They can, but do we really want to tell teachers they can't have a rat or a guinea pig in the classroom?
No, they can. I think they just have to follow the Animals in the Classroom recommendations for schools.
No, because it's, it's listed under-
Are prohibited.
Animals as prohibitive. That's what I'm saying. They can't have a rat, a guinea pig, or a bunny. Or a hamster, for that matter.
I, I hear you Jen, but I would be remiss to-
Bats.
I-
It's a separate section. I don't want-
Where does it, I'm sorry, I missed.
Go under Animals Prohibited in Schools.
Yes.
That after Wild Animals and Domestic Strays, there's Fur-Bearing Animals. That's every single mammal on the planet. I'm just saying.
It's not untrue. It's not untrue.
Yeah, I mean, I think there, if we said Fur-Bearing Carnivores, you know, or mammals that can carry rabies. But otherwise, we're telling teachers that they can't have a mouse or a hamster. I mean, we really are.
Is that what we, is, but is that the intent? Like, is that what we want?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, 'cause I don't know.
I mean, I know my son used to love to be the person to take the animal home for the weekend.
Yeah, of course.
When he was at Cutler.
I mean, I, I hear you on the taxonomy, but I think the spirit of it is to make sure you're not, and I hear you on the rabies, but parasites, fleas, and other diseases and injuries, not to mention like pet dander. A lot of people have dander allergies. I'm not saying someone's gonna be like allergic to mouse dander. I can't even believe I'm saying these words out loud, but here we are. I feel like in my-
People might be allergic to it.
I guess, I guess that's my-
To mice and rats.
Oh, definitely.
Absolutely.
So, I guess I'm just saying, I, 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 I note your taxonomical objection and I actually love you for it. But I think in the interest of policy simplicity, I would be inclined to not support that change because I think this is broad and all-inclusive in a way that I think we, I do mean actually to not have fur-bearing animals or carnivores in the building. Like I think that, that to me, I'm okay with that and I think they should be prohibited, but.
Then I think we need to ask for teacher input, because there are a lot of teachers that have pets in their classroom.
I was just gonna ask, is that, do we have those pets in classrooms? Like fur, a fur-bearing one? I've heard of like turtles.
Turtles, I would say turtle, but turtles are infinitely more dangerous than guinea pigs because of salmonella.
This is why I don't have pets in my house. I don't know the answer to these questions.
Oh, you can't find it online? Oh, Amy, you're killing me.
What is she looking for?
I'm just, I want to look at this document, the Animals in the Classroom.
Oh, the Animals in the Classroom? It's actually, it is. It does, at least my Google search, it does pop right up.
Yeah, I mean, is, is this something where it's going to be one teacher looking for an exception? Because I think that's okay? Or is this something where it's going to be the Wild West and 90 people bringing rats in the classroom, which I don't think it's gonna be?
I mean, I don't know what it's like now, because Zach's not at Cutler. But in the four years he was there, he had two teachers that had animals.
Yeah, Eric, what do you see?
They have fur though.
A lot of-
Yes.
Can I, wait, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna-
Turtles, lizards.
Yeah, so, I'm just, on a procedural level here, um, I, I'm sort of just, I'm just thinking it through whether we want to actually make a motion. Or whether, whether what you're asking is for more information. I'm not quite sure.
I would change it to maybe like animals that could transmit disease. I would take the fur-bearing out completely. And I would say that, you know, animals that have transmissible diseases to humans.
Well, I guess my, my question, wouldn't all animals have the potential for transmitting disease?
No. So, I'm reading the actual document that we're referencing here. It talks about like a one case where a pet guinea pig tested positive for rabies because the owner let it outside. Which then goes to say that if students who volunteer to foster classroom pets during school vacations and summer should keep the animals exclusively indoors. So, I feel like this document doesn't necessarily exclude those. And it's different from, like this kind of focuses on rabies specifically.
Well, I, 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 I understand it says fur-bearing animals. I-
I think my, so, I hear you Jen, I do. I, it's rare that I, I think my concern is that I think it's written in a blunt fashion on purpose. The other thing is that in the actual- The other thing is that in the actual found animals in the classroom, they specifically address that as this line, it says, "Rabies is rare among small rodents like squirrels, rats, hamsters and mice." So they're acknowledging that it's rare, but they're still included in the higher-level DPH policy and I personally, especially not being a biologist, have zero interest in creating any ambiguity that our local policy somehow or other deviates from the state policy. If that line wasn't there, but they specifically include squirrels, rats, hamsters and mice.
Okay, but what we're saying is it's okay to have a turtle, which are known to carry salmonella, which is equally dangerous, if not more dangerous, than a guinea pig, which is the chances of a guinea pig or a hamster having rabies are slim to none.
But I think we're just agreeing with the state guidelines. Like we're just going with the state guidelines, cause we're not biologists.
But we don't have to.
I-
That's what I'm saying.
I would disagree on that. I don't think that we should or could create local policy.
This is where I was gonna just get into the procedure.
Yeah.
Because I, I, what I guess I would ask is that we have a motion on the table, cause right now it feels like we are really debating. We don't have a motion on the table.
So I would move that we switch fur-bearing animals to animals that have the potential to carry diseases to humans.
I'm sorry.
Diseases that are transmissible to humans.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, so hearing none, the motion does not move forward. Does anyone have another motion?
Wait, we can't discuss that motion or?
Uh-uh, they didn't get a second.
Thank you.
I mean, my recommendation would be if we, if there's no other, no other amending-type motion, then the motion might be just to move forward.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm not ready to do that. I'm scanning, sorry. Do you want me to make a motion?
If you're ready, if you're not, someone else can.
All right, I can make a motion. I was gonna try and edit or make a different motion, but I move-
No, if you, I mean, you're welcome to make a different motion if you'd like to.
I'm not ready.
Make a motion and then we can discuss once the motion's on the table.
I move that we adopt policy IMG as presented in the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Julia. Okay, discussion.
Gonna be honest, it seems kinda like you're banning one type of animal because they have disease, but you're leaving animals that also have disease on the table. Seems kinda arbitrary.
So just, I'm comparing the documents, like are, the policy that is on the table feels more restrictive than the letter or the guideline from the state? And I'm wondering why? I mean, to your point, all of these animals can technically transmit disease. Like this says, Animals in the Classroom necessitate certain safeguards, which I agree with. So is it just something about adding something to the policy about teaching and following appropriate safeguards for certain types of animals?
Amy, can I ask, I just want clarify, I think I understand what you're saying, but I want to make sure I understood. Is what you're saying is that, are you saying, this is a question.
Yes.
Are you saying that where this policy says each building shall utilize the Animals in the Classroom Recommendations for Schools to determine which animals may be allowed? Are you saying that that document is actually, because of the way it's written, is actually permitting more animals than this policy?
That's what it feels like.
But, but it's permitting it with a lot of restrictions on how they need to be? Is that what you're saying?
The document feels more like guidelines. It's purpose to reduce human exposure to rabies and other zoonotic diseases. And then our policy feels very restrictive, like all these animals are just prohibited from school. So I feel like the door is open to just amending it to aligning with that document to just give guidelines for handling animals.
So can I ask one more question? Cause I know you're on the policy committee, I'm guessing you guys discussed this.
We did not discuss this.
We didn't go this deep into it.
The animals, the, the part that says in, in the policy, the proposed policy, the part that says animals prohibited from school, do we know whether that list came from the MASCE? Where did that list come from?
This entire policy came from the MASCE. We had no local policy on this whatsoever.
Okay. Because I, I do think I understand what Amy is saying, which is that it, and, and Amy, jump right in if I'm not, but it sounds like what you're saying is perhaps we don't really need this entire policy. What we need to say is we're gonna comply with the Public Health Publication. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Yeah, but I think to Amy's correct point, that doesn't have like a list of prohibited animals, it's written as guidance. I'm just gonna, so we did not discuss this question. We literally just found the right document and made the switch. I'm gonna throw off two other sort of general thoughts. The first one is, I think the point of policy is to help the district do things with more simplicity and I feel like, and maybe this is sort of the, the sort of fair housing, fair compliance, like equal rights sort of thing to me, like there's a clear exception for a service animal, emotional support animal. I don't want to put the district in the position of having to referee whose pet is okay. I don't want there to have to be time spent at the, the building level saying, the ferret is okay, but the turtle's not okay, this turtle's not okay, but this, like to me that feels a little bit like, I don't want, I hate to say it, like a waste of time and not necessarily in the spirit of the policy, which is about safety and disease prevention and, you know, turtles can be dangerous in other ways. Like I, I personally, in this rare exception, I like the black and whiteness of it, where it basically says, you really can't have other animals in the school unless it's a service animal and to me that feels right. And I guess I would ask Eric to opine, because we did not discuss this question in policy and I would like, the whole point of policy is to make operations smooth. I would be curious to know your thoughts about what would operate, what would facilitate smooth operations.
So I was just thinking as, as a, putting myself back in the principal's shoes here and you look at the third paragraph that I've highlighted there. If I'm a principal and I go to this policy, I'm gonna go get that document and make a decision based on that document. If, if I'm reading this, you know, the, the, you're gonna use this document to review and review health records to determine which animals may be allowed in the building. Decision, the principle shall be final. So if the decision, the principle is, yes, I'm okay with a, a gerbil as an example, or that tends to be a classroom pet sometimes, or a hamster, then is that okay or is, does that fall under fur-bearing animals?
I mean, that's the thing, it is-
Yeah, that's the only tricky part of it. I think it creates a dilemma for a principal who's using the guide, as Amy said, like it seems, it seems different than the strictness of this. So I think, as a principal, I would, I would be like, okay, which way do I go? Yes, I'm gonna approve a hamster, but because it's fur-bearing, I, I'm not going to approve it. You're kind of stuck in the trap.
It's also interesting that in the Animals Prohibited from School section, there's another reference, again, this is coming from the MASCE, that says, based on the Massachusetts Departments of Health and Education recommendations, the following animals are prohibited. So there's a reference to general recommendations, non-specified. I don't know if that's meaning this document, which does, I mean, paint a dreary picture of animals in schools. Not a glowing recommendation of why I should bring my turtle to school. I, I'm not sure, I guess my opinion is I, I think we might want to just vote at this point, because I'm not sure that further research might yield a different result. I feel like this is becoming more, what's your philosophy on animals in school? And are you more or less lenient? And I, I don't know where we are in that.
I just, can I bring up one more thing? Do we need this policy to specify that? I know it's in the first paragraph, it says that no one can bring an animal to school without the principal's permission, but do we need to specify that this is regarding like classroom animals brought in by teachers and not like students with a turtle in their pocket?
I don't think so.
No?
I, I don't think so.
No animal should be brought to school.
Why not ta, why not table this?
Like no one, nowhere, no how.
Wait, I, I actually couldn't hear either one, you or you. I couldn't hear either one of you.
I was suggesting, why not table this till the next meeting to, to give us time to go and actually do some homework? Cause I certainly haven't done any on that specific thing. So you're asking us to vote on something that-
Okay, so that sounds like that's a motion to table.
There's already a motion on the table.
Well, there's, right, there's already a motion on the table. Somebody's gonna need to-
We have to vote on the motion that's on.
Yep.
All right, so the current motion is?
That we approve the policy as presented.
So the current, right, so just, this is just a Robert's Rules thing that we need to, so we would, we can vote on the current-
Current policy as written.
Yeah, okay. But we could still have, I'm just making sure, if someone had further discussion, they could stay, they could still.
Sure, unless you want to end discussion.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I have to decide how I'm voting, okay. All right. Okay, so the current motion is to vote to say, to approve the, the policy as presented. All those in favor? That is one, two, three in favor. Those opposed? That's four opposed and the motion fails. Now, I think David is suggesting-
Yeah, to give us a little bit more time to, to give some serious thought on homework, I move that we table it till the next meeting.
Could you speak into the microphone, please? I cannot understand you.
I move that we table it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Future meeting.
A future meeting.
Future meeting.
Yeah.
Future meeting, next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next meeting's a little, little, little budget heavy.
Six weeks, that's why.
Yeah, that's a good point. Future meeting.
All right. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by David Palito. Is there a discussion?
I might just ask for, what is the objective? Just to give everyone time to think about it? How they feel about this policy?
Cause I certainly haven't done any, any thinking about it until this-
Yeah, and that, I, I guess for me, I, I guess, I, I actually think Anna, you sort of nailed it. For me, I don't know if, if it would be appropriate, but to get feedback from the MASCE on whether this line, based on the Massachusetts Department of Health, the following animals are prohibited from schools within the district. Like I, I would like to know, does the Massachusetts Department of Health and Education say these animals are prohibited? Because of, that would change the way, my understanding of this policy, so.
There may be yet another mystery policy that's not cited.
So if that's a, if you, if the policy committee would be willing to ask that specific question, that would help me. I don't know whether the rest of the group would like that question answered, but. I don't know what other people think.
I was just gonna say that the policy as written didn't pass, so we can either try and write the policy at the table, or it has to be tabled to come back another time.
Yep. Well, it's, I mean, right, if it, right, if it comes back another time, I guess I was just trying to give feedback on what questions I might have another time, not tonight, we're not doing it tonight.
Well, or the alternative is we just don't have this policy, which there's dozens of policies we don't have. If we don't like this policy, then-
Well, right now, right now, we don't have it.
Right, so right now what we would have, in the absence of tabling it and coming back to it or rewriting it, is we have no specific policy, which to Jen's point, kind of solves the problem. Nothing is prohibited and what we've done is give the district the recommendations for animals in the classroom from the DPH and probably final discretion to the principal, which maybe that's actually what we want. Like maybe we don't want a policy that's this narrow and we just want guidance.
Okay.
What?
Second grade pet mongoose.
I'm just, I mean, if, if we're not gonna-
We don't want a policy around.
If we're not gonna have a policy, then we're kind of back to that. We don't have a policy and it will be a game time decision by however Eric chooses to manage the situation in the district.
Okay, I think though, we didn't, did we vote on tabling?
We have not voted to table.
Okay, still in discussion.
Okay. Are we ready to move to vote on tabling? I heard the motion was to table this conversation for a future meeting.
If I say no policy then.
I'm sorry, we, we're voting on tabling, I believe.
Voting on tabling.
Correct.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Table for a future date.
For a future meeting.
Correct.
Future meeting. Okay.
I hear you.
All right. All those in favor? And that, that is four in favor. Those opposed? All right, three opposed and the motion passes and we will table this Animals in School.
Have fun, kids. I really, this one goes right back to Dana. Had she not said, "Where is that Animals in Schools?", but-
I still, I still think it protects us to know the correct document.
All right, before it comes back to a future meeting, I'm bringing every poisonous animal I can into the school. I tried to help.
Okay.
Don't come to me when someone gets bitten by a turtle. And I tried to get the turtle to me.
Okay.
Jen actually said the turtle. She tried to warn us.
Only cause turtles carry salmonella.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to more serious things. L-section, but wait, there's more. But wait, there's more. So I present to you the first reading of the L-section. I will say the way that Dorothy gave us these exhibits is more confusing than normal and I don't love it. I actually think the cleaner section to look at is the one that's called L-section for School Committee Review, Eric. That one has the red line changes in it. The one that says with changes includes the entire duplicate policy that was struck. It's just a little messy and the comments are all there, so I would advise us to look at L-section for School Committee Review to get a real sense of what we actually voted on. We did make a few small changes, mostly to LB. If you notice in the red line version, Eric can go up just a little bit, or go down, move forward. There was some strange, sort of in our opinion, strange possessiveness. Our children, all the children, our, all the children, not our children. We thought that was a little weird and so we took out possessive references to children and just said to HW RSD students in general, without clarifying yours, ours, mine, only David's, only Amy's, I don't know. We took that out. And then otherwise, there were duplicate policies on relations with non-public schools, so we kept the MASCE version of this, which is the one that is, is an all-red. And those are the, that's all the L-section has. Like there's not a lot to L, so.
Okay, so because this is a first reading, we're not gonna vote on anything, so this is just an opportunity for people to ask questions.
I just have a question on, I think it's the, I don't know what page it is. It's like page three. In accordance with state law, the school committee will approve a private school when it is satisfied. Approve them for what?
To exist. We asked that same question. Did you know that the school committee has to approve the creation of a private school within the district territory?
It did, it's the first vote I ever took at the school board.
Yeah. That's state law.
Do we have to vote to maintain it as well?
No.
Just to create it? Could we, could we put that in there?
I, again, this has a, this is all coming from state law. We can ask, I can definitely go back and ask, but I would be reticent to wordsmith it too much, but-
I just, yeah, I just, it didn't make sense to me.
I, I, yeah, I, well, I was confused about, and this is probably a legal question, but it says, "In accordance with state law, the school committee will approve a private school when it's satisfied the instruct-" So it's not may approve, it's will approve.
As long as they satisfy those criteria.
Meet the thoroughness, sufficiency and progress.
Okay, which makes you wonder, why do we have to approve it if we have to approve it if they do the following?
I think we have to-
That seems a little bit right.
I think that we have to go through a due diligence to make sure that they do meet all these criteria. Like we're the body that sort of approves and does the spot checking, so to speak, Like, we're the body that sort of approves and does the spot checking, so to speak, that they've met the criteria. But if they've met it, then we have to approve them, per state law, so...
And then underneath "criteria," it says, "A private school may demonstrate its program is through the following methods." And one is evidence of accreditation by the Department of Education, which, when we discussed it, I was like, well, that would make sense for me, you know, that's... The other, the other one is sort of like going through all facets of the school, which I feel like is a really big dig.
So, but you're saying that's, that's only one of the methods that they might have. They might be accredited by the, right, but they might not be. Is that what you're saying?
That's one way.
And one or the other.
That's one, one way.
That's point number one on the how they could.
Right, I see that, yeah.
Jen, if you'd want, since this is only the first reading, we could go back to Dorothy and ask the question of, "And maintain?" And if adding words like that...
Oh, no, I just, I just will approve the creation of a private school. That would, would have clued me in on what we were talking about immediately.
Yeah, I was surprised, but that is a duty that we do per state law. I think, I don't know that state law allows for, or that we want to be charged with the ongoing maintenance and supervision of all private schools in the district in some way. I don't know that we want that oversight.
I don't want to put maintenance in here, I just want to know what we're approving for the private school.
That they exist.
Just that they can exist.
Essentially, what you're approving is that they've gone through the correct process to open the school. We're the governing board for all the schools within our district. So they would qualify under that. All we're really signing off on is the fact that they've now come to us with their entire charter in place and everything, all their Ts crossed.
And as long as, I mean, as long as we understand that, I didn't understand that by what was written.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I was surprised that we did that, but apparently we do.
Okay.
Are there any other things that you want us to go back on, or want me to ask Dorothy about? Dana?
Nope, my own, it really was that, was it "will" or "may"? Like, I really was like, I really, and I'm, and I'm sure it is, again, this policy is probably illegally written policy, and I just, to my point, if it says "will," then it's sort of, our hands are tied, and what's the point?
So, I mean, will is putting the onus on us that we are, in fact, we have to do it, right?
Right.
We can't say, you know what, we don't want your school coming to our district because you're gonna take, in our case, taking students...
Right, or because we just don't like your...
If you have "may" in there, you're actually leaving that up for interpretation, saying that you actually have the option. You don't have the option, you have the obligation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
How many schools are we supposed to be governing in this?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Sorry, how many schools are we supposed to be governing in this?
Well, it's not really that, or my understanding, it's not really that we're governing. So, like, in other words, I imagine, I assume it was Penguin Hall that you voted on. So, so, like, when it knew, it's only, that's, it's a one-time event. So when Penguin Hall decided that they wanted to become a new school in our town, so like, some point in some time, somebody voted on Pingy.
Yeah.
You know, to say...
Gotcha.
But then after that, there's no...
Actually, I do wonder if...
Seems odd.
Can you talk into the...
Well, I'm wondering out loud, and I just forgot, my brain shut off. But, you know, if pre-K, or, you know, something of...
Like a preschool?
Yeah. If we would do that, because I can't think of anything opening up since then, but that would, you know, those are the scenarios that we're looking at.
I wouldn't, I don't know whether it's, does anyone know? I don't think we would do a pre-K.
Do we govern the pre, all the pre-Ks, the private ones?
No, I don't think so.
I don't know.
I don't think so.
And again, I don't, it's not that we govern them, it's that we, like, once we, basically, once we say, yes, you can establish a school, then we're...
I wouldn't think so, because kindergarten and pre-K, like preschool's not required, that people send their kids to preschool or even kindergarten, so...
Yeah, but it's a school operating under, in our district.
But it has no...
But I don't think it's...
There's no instructional... It's not required. I mean, they're, they're nice to have, and people send their kids to them, but there's no requirement that you send your child to preschool.
I'm taking this off on a tangent, just a hypothetical question, so I won't stop that.
Okay, I don't think that's, I don't think it's covered, I don't think it's covered by the policy.
But you know what you can have at those unregulated preschools? Snapping turtles. Lots of them.
Oh, boy.
Angents.
Can I make a motion to change the mascot?
Snapping turtles, I would...
There's a lot of them in the pond.
Okay.
So it sounds like nobody has...
Anybody have anything else about the L policies?
Yeah.
Other than the next time we look at them, I will ask Dorothy to tidy it up a little bit. They're, the red, she normally doesn't present the red copy, so at least we have a red and a black copy, so...
Sort of make sure, there's one more policy underneath this one that's short, but the LDA, student teaching and internships, just over here. Make sure everybody saw it.
Oh, yeah. Okay, you're just saying, make sure everybody looked at policy LDA.
Yep. No questions on that one?
Okay. Okay.
Seen LDA.
You have to scroll way down. That's why, that's why Amy said that, you have to scroll way down. And this was an existing policy, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I have too many...
Take your, take your time, Jen, we're good.
I didn't scroll past enough of the blank pages.
I will say, there was a bit of conversation at policy around the word "initial arrangements," meaning that if, you know, the first time that Endicott or Salem State or someplace approached the district, there would have been a conversation to say, at the school committee level, do we want to engage in a partnership with Salem State? And if it was affirmed, then it would be gone, it would be green-lighted through the initial, but then further would be subject to the second part, which is that we authorize the administration to honor that, work with people, so on and so forth. So if out of the blue, I don't know what school might approach us, the University of Hawaii said, "We would like to have student teachers in Hamilton-Wenham," and I would say, "Could we have an exchange program for retired school committee members?" I would say, "It's great." So I think then the committee would have to approve the University of Hawaii for having a program with us, but afterwards, we wouldn't have to keep approving. I think we did talk about that, though.
We currently consistently work with Endicott, Salem State, Merrimack College.
Great. Okay, so do we want to bring L back on for a second vote on the ninth, since there doesn't seem like there's a lot of concern about it?
I don't know whether we, let's, I don't want to promise that it's gonna be on the ninth, just because I want to look at the ninth, but that's only a week from now, so, but I don't, I think it's, from my point of view, it sounds like we would be ready to see it within a week. It's more a matter of, does it work with the schedule?
Sure.
I'm just looking to make sure everyone feels like that would be fine in a week, if we, if it fit.
Okay.
Yeah, we will bring those, we will see those again.
Okay.
Does that, then that would give you enough time to ask that question about the, I can't remember what the question was, when, how about the...
I don't think there was a question, actually, in the end.
Okay.
And then IMG has been tabled to an indeterminate future time, so...
That's, yep. Okay.
Okay. Great.
Great. Thank you, Policy Committee, much appreciated. Oh, wait, I have a quick question for Policy. What's, what's next?
Ah, I'm so glad you asked that question, actually. So, once we adopt the L-section, with the exception of this IMG sort of hanging into nothing, we would have completed our policy review in its entirety. So the next point would just be to...
That would be very exciting.
Yeah, so that's just a matter of then getting them all on the website. When we have adopted them, if there's, you know, again, little formatting things, like on these, I will instruct Dorothy to remove the extra blank pages, you know, those kinds of things. So we tidy them up, and Janelle puts them on the website, and we have a relatively newly revised policy manual.
Awesome. All right.
Amazing. Thank you, Policy Committee.
Thank you, guys. All right, well, I look forward to it. That sounds like that'll be exciting when we get to the end of that. Okay, next up, negotiations. I think we have nothing to report. Okay. All right. Yep.
Take this opportunity to talk about the TAs.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So the Negotiations Committee hasn't met, but I think it's important to know that teachers' assistants in the district have requested to unionize, and we're currently working with the state through the process. So they've, they've made the initial request to the HWEA. HWEA has filed a request with the state, as they're required to do. We're balancing lists of who's included in the quote TA group. And then, then, at some point, once the state approves it, we'll probably receive a demand to bargain. There's still a ways to go, but I just wanted people to know that was happening, and then negotiations will begin, if it gets that far. They still have some work to do, though.
I didn't fully understand that. I thought the teachers were already unionized.
The teacher assistants. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, sorry, will they be part of our regular teachers' union, or a separate group that we'll have to bargain with?
There'll be a subgroup that we have to bargain with, similar, similar to the secretaries' group. They're under the HWEA, but a subgroup, so...
It seems strange that they would be in the one.
That's the way they organize.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was your comment, David?
It just seemed strange that there would be separation between teachers' assistants and teachers.
Yeah, it's mostly, mostly because of the way they organize. Like, the teacher certification requirements are different, the licensure, the way they're paid, their days, the amount of days, number of days they work, the hours they work, the jobs that they do are different. So I think that's why they keep them separate.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that update. All right, on to the Chair's Report. I don't have much. I do just want to remind anybody, Hamilton people, that the Hamilton Master Planning is inviting everyone to come to the Milesville Middle School on Saturday from 11:30 to 1:30 for visioning session and community meeting. Should be a fun time, should be very cold, but we have hot coffee and food. I encourage everyone from Hamilton to come. Amy, I didn't, I know we didn't talk about it, but would you mind giving us a quick update on where we are on the minutes?
On minutes? I'm almost on recording the minutes from, oh, gosh. Sorry, I don't remember the date right now.
It's our most recent meeting, yeah.
Our most recent meeting, and then we'll need a volunteer to record the minutes from tonight's meeting.
Okay, so everybody heard that, we need a, we need a volunteer for this current meeting.
Can I chime in?
Yep.
So I did interview somebody, again, we've been interviewing for this over and over, trying to find somebody to get into this position. An individual, I believe, is watching this meeting right now, to kind of get the gist of how the meeting goes. So there may be a possibility of having the minutes complete. All the other meetings that we don't have minutes for, we have a subcontractor working on those minutes for us, so we'll probably get them in chunks, two at a time, to approve. So all, some of those go all the way back to, I think, September, so...
And that includes, that includes subcommittee meetings as well?
If we, if we need to do that, I can, yeah, I can just continue that person.
Okay. I'll volunteer to do tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Anna.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Anna.
That means I get first crack at editorial license on the snapping turtle conversation.
I noticed, I noticed you jumped right in. Anna's cleverly noticing that this was not a particularly long meeting.
Hey.
It didn't just fall off of the turnip.
Thank you for that, Amy, and thank you for jumping in and doing that. I appreciate it.
I'll have the other minutes ready for the next meeting.
Okay, so, okay, great.
I might have these, too. Oh, but who should I send them to? Should I write them and then have Amy look at them, because she's the secretary?
I would send them to Amy as a secretary, yes.
Challenge.
All right.
Yep.
I love a challenge.
He's writing lots about turtles and...
Promise to be kind.
Okay, then next week, we do have a meeting next week. Everyone should just be, I know you've all got it on your calendar, but just...
Public hearing, it's...
But we have public hearing, and then the budget vote.
Is that also at six?
Thirty.
Six-thirty, six-thirty, yeah. All right.
No meeting on the sixth.
It's Thursday, February nine.
And, no, yeah, no, no, no. And so, right, so there's no meeting, just for clarity, and some, just, so there's no meeting on the sixteenth, or anticipate meeting on the ninth, or, we still have that, I still have that fifteenth back-up date. If there's some natural disaster, or something happened, we weren't able to meet on the ninth, we would have that meeting on the fifteenth. But let's just assume things are gonna go well. Okay. Topics for future meetings?
You have mine, yeah.
Which is what, IMG?
No.
Oh, you know, the flags, yes.
Pride flag. No, I'm not touching that again. I did my job on that one.
Anything else? No?
Not right now.
Okay. All right.
Motion.
If nothing, what was that? Yeah, Eric wants to say one more thing.
Oh, boy.
I just want, to be, people to understand, next week, this has nothing to do with future meetings, but next week, we have the budget meeting at six, the hearing at six-thirty, and then our regular meeting, which is, which may be fairly lengthy. But on top of that, I have to present at the Hamilton CPC at seven o'clock. I also have to present now at the Wenham CPC, who stacked their meeting. We requested them to move the meeting so that we could, so that I could get to all three to make the presentations, and it's been a little bit difficult. So if you see me coming in and out of the meeting, I'm jumping into a meeting online. The other two meetings are on Zoom, fortunately, so I'll kind of walk out of here, go to, do the presentation, come back in. Vinnie, Vinnie will do the budget stuff anyway and go through that, but I just wanted you to know that in advance that we've been trying to work with the town of Wenham to move the meeting start time. We have made a little bit of movement, but I don't have a final answer yet. I should know tomorrow, but you probably will see me moving in and out of the meeting. And not to be rude, I just want everybody to know what was happening. So we're trying to make the pitch for the CPC monies for the field project, which we'll be, we'll be voting on next week to move forward to town meeting, so... Trying to do three things at once.
At least, it sounds like you might be trying to do even more than three things at once.
Dana, if, if we do come up with a after-school program, is that something the school committee will need a vote on? Or is that something you do?
So I, I believe, and I wasn't here for it, but I believe in the past, when they've done that, they've just brought it forward for approval, so that it's, everybody understands what it is. Generally, a program like that in the past was run by the Y.
Right.
So we have a, we have a contract with the Y to run a summer program last year. It gets a, it got, it got the okay of the school committee, and then the Y manages everything else.
Right, so my question was gonna be, when do you think we could put it on the agenda to have it as a future agenda item?
I don't, I don't think we'll see it until March, which, which would be our meeting after next week.
I see, okay.
Because we still have to put the survey out, get the information back in, and then bring it back here.
All right, so that's, that would be my suggestion for a March meeting.
Yep.
Okay, and, yeah, and I would be, from my end, I would be looking for the superintendent to have something ready before we put it on.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I don't want to preempt that. Needs to be just on the radar.
Okay. All right, is there anything else? Julia looks ready.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we adjourn the meeting at eight oh five.
Second.
Second by David Frankel. All right, all those in favor? And that's six in favor. Oh, unanimous, all right. And the motion passes, we are adjourned.
Good.
Thank you.